Good evening and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Kennybunkport Town Select Board Meeting to order. Today is the 26th of June 2025. It is now 6 o'clock, 6:00 P.M. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to approve the June 12th Select Board Minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor? So approved. Item four, odd wrong. Item four is, there's two, so here we go. We'll do this, the public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience or online who wishes to address the board with an issue that is not on the agenda. Yes. Please, yes, just come up. If you would, introduce yourself by name and address.
Address isn't exactly where I live.
Address, town, street and town will be fine.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Graham Scott. I just live down the street in Kennybunkport. I grew up in this community. My daughter is actually the fourth generation in my family to live here and grow up here. I'm here tonight to talk about a fire that took place in this community on June 6th and destroyed my neighbor's home. I love my community. I love my neighbors, but these specific neighbors are also my parents, longstanding members of this community who have actively volunteered and participated in local causes for decades. I want to start by thanking the first responders who assisted in a response that required support from four neighboring departments, resulted in no injuries, and contained a fire that could have devastated this community. But while our brave firefighters from Kennybunkport and beyond showed up, they were not set up for success. We've been told it took 25 minutes for the first trucks to arrive. And when they did arrive, there was no water and the fire hoses were not prepared properly, delaying getting water on the fire. We owe these brave volunteers more and we need to ensure appropriate resources are provided for a well-trained fire department. In the weeks since the fire, there have been numerous other incidents that have stretched all nearby departments, creating dangerous conditions for residents of this town. To the people in this room who pay taxes, you should be worried. This could have been you. My parents lived within a mile of three fire stations and just outside downtown Kennybunkport, yet it still took 25 minutes for the trucks to arrive, at which point the fire had spread from a neighbor's garage and was burning out of control. We have heard the delayed response was in part due to 911, but we haven't been able to confirm any of those details. To the elected officials in this room, you should be ashamed that you let a man who has paid taxes in this community for 60 years, a veteran and a decades-long member of organizations like Rotary and the American Legion, walk away from a devastating fire with only the clothes on his back and no support from town officials. After standing in the rain for hours, watching his house burn down, no one from the town offered any support and there was no Red Cross presence. In the days following the fire, no one from the town office reached out. That is unacceptable anywhere, but especially in this town with the resources that we should have. And it doesn't end there. Four other members of this community suffered significant losses that night, experienced trauma, and received no support. I'm angry and everyone should be angry because that's not how we treat people in this community. Where the town dropped the ball, the community has stepped up. We've been overwhelmed by the outreach and the support and thank everyone for helping my family get through this. But we need to come together as a community to ensure this doesn't happen again and fix what are clearly systemic issues with the town administration because it could have been much worse and this town needs to be prepared next time. We need full-time staffed fire personnel equipped to protect the people and assets of this town. We need emergency kits with toiletries, a change of clothes, and essentials to distribute to those impacted by disasters. We need timely mental health resources for those that experience trauma. And we need assistance navigating the aftermath of a disaster, including requests for fire reports and other needs for insurance. I came here tonight to raise alarm at a situation that has been brewing for years. I request that this topic be included in an upcoming agenda so improvements can be made before there is another serious incident, one that could involve a loss of life. Everyone worries about taxes and a low mill rate, but until you have this type of thing happen and you no longer have a home to return to, it really hasn't been put into perspective. For everyone in this room and watching online, I want you to remember all of this during the next election because as a resident of this town, this is not what I voted for. Thank you.
I want to express my sincere sadness for your, for your loss and thank you for what I believe had a number of constructive recommendations there. Anything you want to add?
I'm certainly happy to have the Fire Chief and Police Chief come and give a report on the incident at the next meeting. And I offer that they would be happy to meet with the families well and answer any questions about the response. I have asked for a debrief from them and understand the process that went through. I don't think that there were issues with water supply. Kelly had mentioned that to me and I asked, but I'm happy to have them come to the next meeting.
Excellent.
Or if the family wants to meet with them to ask their own questions, that's always available.
Probably ought to try to do both. Let's just, let's try to do both. Thank you for the courage of coming here and sharing that. Couldn't have been easy. Is there anyone else online or in the audience?
Yes, I do.
Okeydoke.
Good evening. Janina Nicholas, Director of Support Services. I would just like to mention that we did put together another two days for the old trash cans drop off. And I would like to remind residents that those two days are coming fast. One is actually tomorrow, Friday, June 27th. It is from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And the next day is Saturday, June 28th. It's from 8:00 a.m. to noon as well. It's going to be at the Public Works Facility, Public Works Garage. So it's at 105 Beachwood Avenue. So for those who didn't have a chance to drop off their cans, old cans first time, we accommodated the second drop-off time.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
No other, no one else out? Then item five, we have a Graves Library Update.
So that is me as the library's representative, chairperson to the library. I am here to do a proclamation from Mary Lou. So let me get my glasses, make sure I get it right. Whereas in 1921, the historic Customs House brick building on Main Street became the Louis T. Graves Memorial Public Library in memory of Abbott and Monte Graves' son. And whereas this generous gift by the Graves family became one of the most enduring and significant contributions to the people of Kennebunkport. And whereas 77 years later, in 1998, Graves Library hired a young, vibrant, energetic children's librarian from Saco, Maine named Mary Lou Buchavales. And whereas thus began a 26-year love affair between the town and this dynamic young woman who would rise to become director in 2005 and transform the library into the beloved center of the community that it is today. And whereas in her tenure as library director, Mary Lou has increased patronage and programming, hosted local and nationally-recognized authors, steered a major capital campaign to improve and expand the existing historic building, weathered the COVID pandemic with compassion and creativity. And whereas in 2023, the Maine Library Association publicly recognized Mary Lou's unique talents, sparkling persona, and amazing work ethic, naming her the Outstanding Librarian of the Year. And whereas, in the words of one library volunteer, "Made so many lifelong relationships and brought so much love, laughter, fun, and community spirit to us all." Whereas the community will honor, celebrate, and thank Mary Lou for her 26 years of dedication and service to our community at a special open house garden party at the library on Saturday, June 28th, from 2:00 to 5:00 P.M. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Kennebunkport, do hereby proclaim June 28th, 2025 as Mary Lou Buchavales Day in the Town of Kennebunkport.
Thank you.
Furthermore, we encourage all citizens to attend the June 28th library event to show your appreciation to Mary Lou for everything she has done for our community for two and a half decades, to wish her well as she turns the page to an exciting next chapter in her life, retirement, and to say farewell to one of the town's most beloved treasures. Thank you, Mary Lou. You are number one in our book.
Amen. Could I please have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Amen.
Yeah, can we get a picture with these?
Yeah.
The board, do they want to join in?
The board's joining?
Yeah.
So in your interview with me, what do we call it? The, what's your story?
What's your deal?
What's my deal?
What's your story?
So I told you about how I got, came to Maine and that I spent time in Bucksport. But what I didn't tell you was that the woman that I used to go see was Patricia Smith Ranzoni, who was like an aunt to me. She's also one of the only poet laureates in the state of Maine. And she has been writing poems for over 30 years. She's an educator. And one of the things I think you are going to have the impact on a lot of people that you don't realize is what she had on my life. A, I'm in Maine, but B, I, it was just the love and care that she showed me as a little kid when I would come up here on vacation. That to this day, when I still snap peas, grain beans, on, every day when I do it, I think of her because we did that when I was a little kid on the porch. And I think you're going to have that impact on people. So you're going to be impressed that I know that Section 811 is poetry.
Yes.
So these are going to be dedicated, in your honor, to the library from Pat Ranzoni, who is a Maine poet. And she is, so those are going to be for you.
Thank you very much.
811.
811, that's right.
All right.
Thank you very much. Can I just say something?
Please, please.
I'm not asking for money today. I just want to say thank you to this board, to this town manager and the staff, and to this community of wonderful people. I will miss you all very much. It's been a real honor. Thank you.
So we need to move on, unfortunately. Item six. Oh, we need to say thank you for coming. Is it something I said? Yeah, good point. Good, good. We need to put it in the budget, Mike. So to the few that have remained and all of you out in TV land, we will continue with item six. This is to consider the renewal of a liquor license for the First Serve Edgewater, Inc., doing business as Mabel's House located at 126 Ocean Avenue. The staff has reviewed and recommended approval.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? So approved. Item seven, similarly, this is a renewal of a liquor license. This is for First Serve Kennybunkport Hospitality Group, Inc., doing business as Mabel's Lobster Claw, which is located at 124 Ocean Avenue. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So approved. And now we begin the Eric Labell Show with item eight, which is to consider the purchase of a Skidsteer, which Eric will explain to us what a Skidsteer is.
Yes, well, a Skidsteer is a small tractor-like device basically that, it's a unique tool, very narrow. It's possibly 72 inches wide and can maneuver in various places by actually having the ability to rotate wheels in opposite directions. So it can actually do a rotation on its, on its, on one plane, if you will. The, so what we're proposing here, we've, as you all know, we had substantial shortage of staff over this last year and we had some savings in our, in our budget. And we're just proposing to do a one-time purchase of this piece of equipment. It's a piece of equipment we don't currently have. I have asked the staff to do a lot more of the roadwork that we've been doing, examples such as the, the Old Cape Road and such. Once we paved the road, we bring in our paving contractors. Well, we're actually, we're asking the crew to do all the shouldering work, all the ditching work, all the prep work that goes with those, that type of work. A Skidsteer is a very useful tool for, for being able to maneuver along the roads and on small job sites and be able to move gravel and material. You'll see very frequently on, on a lot of job sites. We just happened, we've never happened to have one. We felt this is an opportunity to possibly do that. And also, I'm also proposing to try to purchase some appurtenances that go with that, basically tools that go with the Skidsteer, which you'll see in, in the proposal here. So we've looked at four different Skidsteers. We did make a recommendation on the Skidsteer that was, that was preferred. The mechanic had recommended, which was the Hyundai HS 120V. What we're proposing to purchase with that is, you'll see, is a hydraulic fork. Basically the forks will pick it up at the pallets and things for my vehicles and trucks. The four-in-one snow pusher, this is a multi-use vehicle and not only used in the summertime, it's also used in the wintertime. So the snow pusher, there's that four-in-one, uh, snow pusher. It's a box, you'll see it sometime in front of a loader, but you could also utilize them in front of a Skidsteer. We're also proposing winter tires for that to be able to utilize it for clearing parking lots, sidewalks, things of like. So we're also proposing, asking for, for greater grades. So we do have gravel roads here as, as, you know, gravelly road, gravelly brook road, some of those roads like that, that we don't have a grader. We don't, we're not proposing to have a grader. We don't feel we use it enough. However, we can put a grader blade on these, on this device to be able to grade those gravel roads with the Skidsteer. So, and also snow tires. The last piece there, this is quite expensive. It's called a road widener. It's a very unique tool in the sense of it's a box that the Skidsteer can, can grasp onto. And we did utilize, actually, we did borrow one for, for when we did the,
Old Cape.
Old Cape Road, thank you. And you'll, probably if you noticed, it came out, it comes out very professional job. It looks very good, very efficient for the amount of mileage that we can do. You know, it can do a lot of gravel, a lot of shouldering gravel work in a short period of time. It basically, it pushes up against the back of a truck, a dump truck. The dump truck will dump into this box and this box has conveyor belts and such. And it drops and lays down and then we just would roll that over. We would roll that and compact that material on the side of the road. It's a tool that I've used in the past. It's a very unique tool.
And when we did Old Cape Road, we got a price from Pike.
Yes, we'd gotten a price.
To do the same work that we did.
For the length of the Old Cape Road, as you can see, there was $88,000 to hire Pike to do it for us.
And that was one road.
That was one.
We'll have this for all future.
Just that one section, just the road widening part of it?
Just the shoulder work.
Just the shoulder work.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we're, we're looking at other roads right now. We're looking at doing Beachwood at this point. We're not done with the, with the Wells District Road. We still have locations where this would be utilized. We just hadn't had the tools today to really do it or do it efficiently, I should say. So all in all combined, the cost of all these, these items are, is $149,000, $149,200 for all the devices.
Who's, who's the company you're going to buy it from?
So there's, oh.
I don't see it yet.
Oh, let me. Let me get, sorry. So the road widener is its own company.
Beg your pardon?
The road widener is its own company.
Oh.
Yeah, that is a separate company.
The road widener is an attachment to the Skidsteer?
Yeah, these are all attachments.
Okay, so it's still an attachment?
It's basically a Swiss Army knife on wheels. You know, it's just amazing the kinds of things it can do.
The road widener's from Alta Equipment.
Thank you, yes. Sorry, do. Yeah. My apologies. I have my bag up here, but I just.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions from the board before our motion?
No.
So may I, may I have a motion to approve?
I will make the motion to approve the purchase of the Skidsteer for the $149, two.
How's second?
It's a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? So approved.
Thank you.
Next item, item nine. Eric, to address the update on Oak Street drainage improvements.
So we put us a preliminary design together and I reached out to, to three contractors that all come out and visited the site and asked for some appropriate pricing on, on, on the work that was being proposed on, on the drainage plan. As you all know, this has been a long-going conversation. I think the neighborhood has been looking to get some drainage improvements there for a long time. This has been discussed at length. So I, I finally got some pricing for them. I got, one of the contractors opted not to. It may have been that that particular contractor got busy after we met.
It's kind of hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. One, one of my, one of the contractors that I had reached out to opted not to provide me a price. However, the other two did. As you can see here, the two, the two prices that we received were $137,950 and another one for $257,919. Once again, that may be a sign of either how busy people are because I did look at the quantities and such and I did try to compare, I did compare the two prices provided to us. I did, there was no significant difference. All local contractors, I was hoping, you know, the local contractors, it was a pretty straightforward job nearby on a dead-end street, if you will. I felt that, you know, that may have been that, you know, work could be done pretty easily, quietly. It's not on a, you know, there isn't all sorts of traffic issues associated with it. So I can't, I don't really have a clear reason why there'd be such a nexus in the price other than it could be how busy people are. Maybe they'll take the job if, you know.
Make it worth their while.
Yes, exactly. So I, my recommendation is to go with the low bidder, which would be George Burr and Son.
Normally personally, I'd be concerned often about low bidder, but I, there are few that are as good, in my opinion, from my experiences, as Burr and Son, so.
So we're not going to need the traffic control?
I'm, no, my, right. So that is something that George had put in there that's, and that was also discussed with the second bidder as well. I had met with him earlier. And I was not, the intention will be that wherever the work is going on, because the, the road is quite narrow. The excavator itself is going to be as wide as that road. So, so when they shut down at night, they'll need to shut down there. Of course, people will have access to their properties and such, but people will have to exit either on Lock or on West Street. So they'll, they'll need to go the opposite direction from wherever the excavator is. But I don't think there's a need to shut down the, to, 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 you know.
Have traffic.
Yeah.
Traffic and emergency services can still reach them from different sides.
There'll need to be some communication with, with the, with the Fire Chief as to where we're located or hopefully somebody can get there to just keep eyes on it.
Perfect. How long do you think it'll take or when could they start?
It's going to be at least a month. So I'm not, they're not doing any of the paving work. It's, I would say it's probably a month to six weeks, I would say. What I, what I am planning to do, this, so the schedule was depending, I don't have an exact date. One of the contractors, they provided me when they were available to start. I'd have to check back in with, with George. I don't have a start date for George. They all know my intention was to start this summer. And my intention is to have them do their work, come in afterwards and reclaim all three streets. So it's to basically pulverize all the streets and regrade those streets and then pave those right away after that. So all the work would happen this year. If I'm, if they're able to get going sometime, I would say we'd be probably getting out of there September if they're able to get going this summer. And then we'll all come in there and hopefully by October, everything will be paved in black.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote for $137,950 to Burr and Son for the improvements to Oak Street Drainage.
So second?
Second.
And a first and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? So approved. And then we're, item 10 is for the salt bid.
Yes, so the salt bid is a, so we have received. So we received, well, we didn't receive bids for this one. This, we actually had regional bids that, that went out. So we had a regional bid from Southern Maine Planning, a regional bid from GP Cog, Greater Portland Council of Governments, and a bid from the state of Maine. The prices came in on those at 83, 83.40 for the state as well as the Southern Maine planning. We reached out to, to GP Cog and asked to, if we could just co-opt a there bid and also spoke with the contractor there. It was at $79, $79.63.
Sixty-three.
Fifty-three, thank you. The, that's, that's about a $3,000 savings for what we would typically purchase in, in a year for us. So we're recommending to go with the GP Cog bid.
Have we dealt with them before?
The, the salt contractors are, it's going to be Eastern Salt, Morton. I mean, there, there, there's only a handful of contractors that. So we go directly to the contractor. The regional bids will go out through them. However, we go directly to Eastern Salt or the contractor, the salt bid.
And can do better as an individual than we could buying on the regional. That's, that's interesting.
Yeah.
It is.
No, we still use the regional bid. It's just our contractors with them directly.
Yeah.
Ah, so this, so it is the same price, the 79.63.
Right.
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
We would go directly to the vendor.
All right.
And is that who we had this past year, too?
I think.
No, we used Eastern last year. So, yeah.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Morton Salt bid of $79.63 per ton for, for, for full year 26.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? So moved.
I have a question for the board. What is the logo of the Morton Salt can?
Little girl wearing a umbrella.
There you go.
And it's a yellow umbrella, too, right?
It's the girl with the umbrella.
With the umbrella.
Yeah.
It's the rain, not the salt.
Good, thank you.
All righty.
You're staying there for the abatement, right?
Item 11.
Eric, the abatement.
I said it's the Eric Show tonight. This is a.
Yes.
So item 11 is to consider abatement of $921.37 for the Coventry Eagle LLC Two Pier Road. This is the old musette.
Yes, that's correct. So we, we do period, we do inspections on these buildings to try to reevaluate. So they had removed some seats from their restaurant, which is one of the criteria for the number of, of units or equivalent dwelling units, if you will, that we, that we measure. And so we basically, we had a prior number that we were billing on and now we have reduced those by 1.3 units, equivalent dwelling units. And so that in turn is, is the reason for the abatement.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement for Two Pier Road in the amount of $921.37.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Item 12, to appoint Paul Cattigan. Item twelve, uh, to appoint Paul Catigan to the, uh, ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, with the term expiring in June twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-eight, it's a three-year term, did I say twenty-twenty-six?
Twenty-twenty-eight it is.
I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Catigan to the ZBA with a three-year term expiring in June twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion?
I would just like to make a comment that I served with Paul, and when he was chair on the ZBA, and he does an excellent job for the town.
He's a great job.
Great job.
I really appreciate having him back.
Yeah.
And this for those that might know, again, he was on the, on the board, but he has been off the board for the requisite amount of time, and now is eligible to, to rejoin. So, thank you, Paul. Did I, did we make a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
And we're ready to vote.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Here we go.
Thank you. Item thirteen is to authorize a quick claim deed for, uh, Joanne Small Williamson LLC, it's map and lot twenty dash double zero one dash ten.
Make a motion to approve the quick claim deed for map and lot twenty dash zero zero one dash one zero.
Second.
For first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? So moved. Item fourteen, uh, this is an update from our Neighborhood Housing Trust on Landon Woods, on the Landon Woods neighborhood.
Five minutes out, maybe we, we move the next step?
I'm sorry?
She's not here yet.
Okay, we're gonna wait a bit.
She's on her way.
Uh, item fifteen, uh, is that, thanks, can we, can we just go ahead, huh?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, perfect. Uh, the appointments, uh, this is our committee, committee stuff. And what, what would work best, uh, I can go down the list, and then, uh, we can say who was on before and, uh, talk, discuss together who would like to take it agai- this year. Uh, the Cape Porpoise Pier Committee, uh, was Alan last year.
I'm good.
Excellent. Uh, the Climate Resilience Committee was, uh, John and Mary Beth, and I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, that will stay the same. Uh, Goose Rock Speech Advisory Committee was myself, I would like to keep that if all agree.
That's fine.
Government Wharf was Alan.
I'm good with that.
We will keep it. Uh, Growth Planning was Sheila.
Yeah, I, I would like to take that, if no one else...
No, perfect, everyone's in agreement, we will do that. Uh, Graves Library Board, David.
I will stay with that.
Excellent. Uh, Investment Committee was Alan and Mary Beth.
I'm good with that.
I'm good.
Excellent. Uh, Kenny Bonkport, Neighborhood Housing Trust, David.
We should change the name, but yes, I will stay with that.
Perfect. Uh, so, Kems, Alan?
Yes.
Excellent. Planning Board, David.
Yes.
Perfect. Shade Tree Committee was Sheila. Joe, would that be something you'd be willing to do for us?
Roger that.
Excellent.
That means you get to work with Eric.
Thank you.
There's always a silver lining. Uh, Southern Maine, uh, Regional Planning, uh, Mary Beth, uh, was, was that one?
Yeah, and I would like to see if, um, somebody else would like to take that over, I, I missed, uh, the two regional things in June. Um, but it's a, it's a monthly thing, it's a very good, you know, Joe, I don't know if you'd be interested in it, it's a good, it's a very good group of people, um, great board.
Thanks, Joe, that's, they're, they're important for our resiliency work, too, so that's wonderful. And the Zoning Board of Appeals was Sheila, uh, that's an open slot.
I, well, I guess they meet very rarely.
Right.
Right, so I could do that.
You wanna do that?
Or do you want to do that?
Roger that.
I was gonna, I was gonna throw Joe in, I would be...
Sure. I will step in.
Excellent, thank you, Joe. Very good. Uh, the, the Town Hall Building Committee, it's an ad hoc committee, Mary Beth and I have been doing that, I would enjoy staying.
Yeah.
Excellent. And then we have a new committee, which is our River Committee, that Alan suggested we put together after Mary Beth had mentioned it. And Alan appointed Mary Beth.
Well, the thing is... So, it was the Kenny Bunk, remember when the Ri- we had the different committees come, and the Kenny Bunk?
Yeah.
And then they put the memos, well, they have a Kenny Bunk Select Board member there, and I, I asked why we didn't have a rep, I haven't, they've had one meeting in June, I was all ready to go, and, and I missed it, um...
We didn't have a rep.
He won't miss it next time.
So, you're willing, Mary Beth?
I'm, I'm willing.
Excellent.
Unless somebody really wanted it, but, yeah.
Excellent, we are done, perfect on that. Alrighty.
So, you're gonna vote on that slate?
We're gonna vote, so we need to vote on the slate, uh, should, do I need to read it again, or are we okay?
I think you're fine.
Okay, excellent, so, all in favor, David, do I have a motion for this, for this?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing first and second, no, no further discussion, all in favor? We are good.
You're gonna do it, though.
And the next one is the update on the Neighborhood Housing Trust at Landon Woods.
Hi.
Hello.
I would love that, yes, thank you, thank you. Uh, all right, thank you for your patience, if you were delayed, I apologize.
Right on moving.
Great, did you get my shared ETA?
Yes.
Great, okay. Hi, I am Larissa Crockett, I am the Executive Director, Director of the Neighborhood Housing Trust, and I am coming from our Strategic Planning Committee meeting, which was after our groundbreaking ceremony, so it's been kind of a big afternoon, and I'm really excited to be here to kind of bring you up to date about where we are with our Landon Woods project, and kind of, um, you know, what we're up to, so, I made this little slideshow, I hope you guys like it, here we go. So, we are the Neighborhood Housing Trust, as a, just as a reminder, we expanded our mission to include the neighboring communities of Kennebunk and Rundle last year, and we have this lovely little new ni- uh, logo to represent that, and I really like to think about this logo, so, the house on the left is a little greener, when it's not on a screen, as being representative of, of Rundle with their agricultural heritage, Kennebunk Port's here in the center with its blue, with its nautical heritage, and the brick-red-orange on the right is Kennebunk with their mill heritage.
We're the only one with a heart, I noticed.
I noticed that.
Don't tell the other teams. Okay, and we do, we build homes to help create futures and sustain communities, that's really what we do. So, why do we do this work? The market does a great job at a lot of things, what it is not doing a really great job of right now is allowing the people that we rely on to service the community that we love to live here. So, I think about our work as building homes that the market simply can't justify building. If land in a community is five hundred thousand dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars for a single house lot, there is no market that can handle building homes that people can get started in, or that people can downsize to live in place in as they age in place in our community. My first home that my husband and I bought was eighty-eight thousand dollars, in, that was in nineteen ninety-eight. Inflated to today's dollars, it would be about a hundred seventy thousand dollars. Nowhere can you buy a one hundred seventy thousand dollar home. And one of the other ways to really think about this is that, when I bought my first home, very likely when you bought your first homes, the ratio between the median income of a household and the median price of a home was one to three. And economists really see that as an, um, an achievable and a healthy ratio. A one-to-three ratio gives a housing market space to accommodate folks that are looking to enter into that market. Right now, nationwide, we are averaging one to five, that's why on every news channel you are going to hear about a nationwide housing crisis. In Kennebunk, we are running at a one-to-eight ratio, in Rundle, we're running at a one-to-seven ratio, and in Kennebunk Port, you are running at a one-to-fourteen ratio. When you have that mismatch of what your people are earning, and when we talk about people, let's talk about who those are. We are building housing for the person that you go and open a bank account with at your bank. We're all building housing for people that drive your kids to school, for people that are there in the school, working as an ed tech, as a custodian, as a first-few-years teacher. We are building homes for the people that are registering your vehicles, building homes for the people that are helping you at the library. We are building homes for the people that make the community the place that people want to live. There is a place for market-rate housing, absolutely, and when the market cannot justify creating the housing, that the people we rely on to create the towns we want to live in can afford to buy, that's where we step in, so, that's why we do this work. So, how do we do that work? We are both a five oh one C three and a five oh one C four, those are IRS tax designations, and what that really means is how we bring in money. So, if, um, a funding organization or an individual donor gives us money, that comes into our five oh one C three, because then that money is tax-deductible. If a community like the town of Kennebunk Port gives us land, that comes into our C four, no need for tax deduction. Housing that we build out of our C three, we build to sell to households that earn no more than eighty percent of the area median income. For a household of four people right now in Kennebunk Port, that is eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars a year. The C four is where we build housing for anyone that earns above that. Right now, our organization has set a cap of a hundred twenty percent of the area median income for folks that we build housing for. For a family of four, that's around a hundred fifteen, a hundred sixteen thousand dollars a year. As a reminder, in that ratio that I was just talking about, if you, as a household, are earning, uh, let's make it a hundred twenty thousand a year, 'cause that's just easier math. If your household is earning a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year, historically, you would, and, and still, from an economic standpoint, you can really comfortably afford to buy a house that's three hundred sixty thousand dollars. There are no, zero homes in any of these three towns on the market that are year-round homes in the three hundreds, they don't exist. So, just as a reminder, why that, that piece is important, we are building homes for people that are earning a hundred twenty percent of the area median income, because people that are earning that much money still cannot afford to live anywhere near here. And that's, I think, important to people to really feel and understand, I have kids my, that are in their twenties, that are looking to try to start to buy houses, they have good careers, they are working people, they work hard, and they are in such a different place from an ability to access a market that is simply no longer serving them. We are a group of hard-working people, we have fifteen board members, we are grateful to have David Bancroft on our board as a voting member, and we have Lori Smith on our board as a non-voting member, in the same way that we have Courtney Netto from the Kennebunk Select Board as a voting member, and we have Brian, I'm forgetting his name.
Levarier.
Thank you, Levarier, um, as a non-voting member from Kennebunk. Um, and we are working with Rundle to see who they wish to pass on to us from a select board standpoint, and we have Keith Trefethan as our non-voting town manager member. We have five standing committees, we have a development committee that helps us bring money into the organization, we have a finance committee to make sure that we are appropriately, um, expending money out of the organization. We have a real estate committee that really helps us identify potential spaces for projects, and then helps to oversee that building process as we move along. Our stewardship committee helps to, um, market to would-be home buyers, helps to run the lottery process to identify those buyers, and then serves as continuing support once people are homeowners within our homes. And our strategic planning committee is working on our first-ever strategic plan, that will have a action plan for the next three years with kind of, um, vision-y goals up until twenty thirty. And we have one staff person, and that's me. So, Landon Woods, again, using this word attainable homes, sometimes people, when they hear affordable homes, they he- they have a, an image of what that means. For us, what an affordable home means is it means that it is a home that normal people can afford. People that are working people, people that have retired and are looking to downsize and, and stay in their community can afford to have. They are homes that are attainable to the people that we say hello to and that are our, our friends and colleagues and neighbors now. This is our site plan, so you will see this road, um, coming down, yet to be named officially, this is not going to be Landon Woods Road, I can guarantee you that. Um, so you'll see three structures labeled Building One, Building Two, and Building Three. Each of those is a duplex, and it has been designed to meet, um, the Kennebunk Port ordinance language concerning two-family dwellings. And we think it has been designed to meet kind of a Kennebunk Port aesthetic. So, these homes, as a reminder, I presented this to you guys last year as well, but we have, on each of the duplexes, there is a single-story home and a two-story home. The single-story homes are just under a thousand square feet, they have two bedrooms, one full bath, and we see them as being really perfect for one-to-three-person households. And the two-story homes are almost fourteen hundred square feet, three bedrooms, one full bath, two half baths, and we think that they're a great fit for households of three or more people. And here's what they look like. We think that this looks like a classic New England farmhouse. So, you'll see there on your right, the two-story home, the door is, classic New Englander, right, that offset door, and the two stories, and then what would be the L and the attached building in this classic New England farmhouse is the single-story, two-bedroom home. And we have, for marketing purposes, we've named each of the single-story homes after the songbirds that live on the site, and each of the two-story homes after trees that are found on site, so this building, Building One, this is the one that's closest to the street, is the Finch and the Pine. Our Building Two is the Cardinal and the Oak. And Building Four at the, uh, Building Three, rather, at the end of the road, deepest into the site, is the Chickadee and the Birch. You'll notice quickly the slight difference in the house plan here, so the first two homes are the same plan with that extended L, which is where the mechanical rooms are living. The la- uh, the ledge at the sites that Building One and Building Two are going onto are, is so heavy, and, and, um, the cost to blast for full basements is simply prohibitive. So, slab foundations will be going here, so the L was expanded lengthwise to accommodate the mechanical systems that would be, um, in the basement as they are in the Chickadee and the Birch. The Chickadee and the Birch will have full-height basements of seven feet, seven and a half inches, um, and walk, um, doghouse-door-style basement exits off the back. Um, I don't really understand exactly what the doghouse door means, but it's part of the news ordinance, uh, the new, uh, state-level language, so that is what is on the back of these homes. And you'll see that that L is not quite as long, because there's no mechanical rooms that are happening there. Any questions so far? Okay. So, what are we doing, so today, we brought, we broke ground, we did it, shovels in the dirt, pictures taken, cake eaten, eaten, toasts made, and very appropriately, short speeches made by our, our speakers, so thank you for that, Mr. Bancroft. Um, road construction is in process, if you drive down Beechwood Avenue, you will see machinery on site, you will see the road having been starting to be cut in. They will be doing the stumping and grubbing next week, um, and we do expect for foundation work to be coming in, um, and be done, actually, within the next month. They will also be doing some minor blasting, um, probably mostly for well lines, so each of these homes is going to have a separate well. So, six wells are going on to the property, and we need to make sure that those lines are able to get from each well to each of the different homes. Um, and then the, um, the road will get completed, the framing, we hope, is going to begin in late August. We are starting to advertise the homes now without any final figures on costs until we get a little further down, but the, what we do know is that we are, we did receive Maine Housing subsidy, for which we are deeply grateful, and Maine Housing's program, the Affordable Home Ownership Program, which is a statewide program, it caps the income level of households that purchase homes under this program at one hundred ten thousand two hundred forty dollars a year, so we know that we are only going to be working with households that earn up to that level, and it caps the home price at three hundred seventy-eight thousand. So, we know that none of these homes will sell for more than three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars per home. And we expect to have some of these houses selling for quite a bit less than three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars per home, but we will not finalize those numbers until our road is completed, our, um, foundations are in, because those are really the places where we still have possible use of contingency. So, we need to know kind of where our final costs are coming in for this project before we will advertise with set prices for set homes. But what we will be doing, starting very soon, is a, kind of a massive spread of, um, coming soon, houses for households earning no more than a hundred ten thousand two hundred forty dollars a year, at no more than three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. And we're hoping to really work with, tightly with our town managers, making sure that all of our municipal employees are having access to that information with RSU twenty-one, to make sure everyone that's under a contract at the RSU twenty-one, so it would be transportation, custodial, ed tech, and teachers have access to that information, and then working with our fellow nonprofits to distribute out through both faith-based communities, as well as other nonprofit organizations that have staffing and people that they serve, that would, we really want to make sure know that these houses are coming online. Um, we will hold a housing lottery in November of this year. Our hope is that that, well, our plan, is that that lottery will serve then as a... Our hope is that that, well, our plan is that that lottery will serve then as a standing list. So, we have, you know, people will do the same thing as we did for Heritage Woods, the house that came on sale last year. We will have people take a first-time homebuyers class and provide us proof that they have taken that class. We want people to take that class, because we want to make sure that everyone that is applying into this lottery really understands what does it mean to buy a home, are, really has an opportunity to sit with experts and determine, are they ready to be a homeowner? And it helps inform them about access to programs through Maine Housing, through Maine Housing mortgages, and other spaces that might be providing support for them throughout this home-buying process. They also have to have a pre-qualification letter from an established mortgage provider, Bankor Savings Bank, Kennebunk Savings Bank, you know, some sort of mortgage provider, that says that they are qualified to hold a mortgage up to the sales price that we will have established by that point for the homes that they are looking to buy. And that will then, and then we income-qualify them. We will confirm that they do not exceed the income limit of a hundred ten thousand dollars a year for that household. If they meet those three criteria, they will be put into the lottery that we will hold in November, and we will establish a list of everyone, we will pull every name, and then we will start at the top of that list. Would you like to buy a home? And we will work ourselves down. And what we know from our experience at Heritage Woods is that it is likely that even someone that is identified, we have one homebuyer that has already been identified and secured. They are from the housing lottery in June of last year. They are, so we have five homes that will be having a lottery to identify homebuyers for. And we really do think it's likely, someone along the process will have to drop out of that process, and that list will, will be where we go to the next name. Once these five homeowners have been firmly established, that list will stay in place for any future developments that we are building, or should any home within an existing development come up for sale, we will go back to that list. So, what we really want people to hear is even if they're not ready to buy a home in 2025, but they think they're going to be ready to buy a home in 2026 or 2027, please enter this lottery so that you are on that list. If we call you and you, we say, would you like to buy a home, and you're not in a position to do so, you will stay in your position on the list, and we will call you again next time.
Larissa, you said five.
Yes.
Five or s-
It's five, because we have one that's established already from the previous lottery process.
Oh, 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 new, new. Okay, five avail.
Yeah. Um, and then our, the builder tells us that these homes are likely going to be completed, occupancy permits in hand by the end of 2025.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
Is the land included in the purchase price?
You know, Mr. Daggett, I knew that you would have that question. And yes, it is. So, this is a condo, um, condo, I hate making up words, but I'm just gonna do it. It's a condoized development, okay? So, each home has been, um, assigned a limited common area piece of land that is attached to their home, and then the homeowners' association will own the remaining land. So, all of the land and the homes themselves will be subject to property taxation.
I'm glad to hear that.
I knew you would be.
For the town and for the owner.
I know, I know, I know it was a twofold.
So, Larissa, part of that then is, do they have their own HMO then? Where they're accountable for, like, snow plowing and?
Yes, they will be a self-governing organization. And their shared common element that will require maintenance will be the road. So, they will own their own wells, they own their own septic tanks, and then as duplexes, they will share a leach field. So, they will, they will together be responsible for the maintenance of that field. But the organization as a whole will own the land that is not part of the limited common areas, and they will own the roads that will be required. But they will be governing themselves as how they wish to handle that.
And the subsidy that, or, I think subsidy that we're getting from the state of Maine, is that just for Landen Woods? Or will that also be for, you know, the current, our, our current houses that go for sale?
Um, no, the, this is just to Landen Woods. So, that subsidy, which is about seventy-seven thousand, two hundred dollars per unit, stays with that unit for the life of the unit. So, we are a forever affordability, affordable, um, organization. So, these homes are costing us right now, we are pricing out at four hundred forty-eight thousand dollars to build each of these homes. Again, emphasizing where the market simply cannot afford to build homes that a, uh, that people can afford to buy that are in many of the fields that we rely on. Four hundred forty-eight thousand dollars is a large mortgage. You're pushing up against three thousand dollars a month to afford that, which means in order for that to be affordable to your household, you would need to have nine thousand dollars a month coming into your home, and that would mean you would need to have a hundred eight thousand dollars a year minimum coming into your home to not be underwater from a financial standpoint. There's a huge number of households in our community that are working hard, that we rely on for services, that do not generate that income. So, the subsidy, though, stays with it. So, that, so that subsidy is going to be applied to the cost that we are paying to build these homes. The homeowner will buy their home, let's say they buy their home at three hundred sixty thousand dollars. If in five years they wish to sell that home, we have something that we call our maximum price formula. We will take that three hundred sixty thousand dollars as the starting price of the home. We have a state metric that we tie our inflation of the saleable price to. So, there's a small increase in the saleable price of that home each year. So, five years from now, maybe they sell that home for three hundred sixty-eight thousand. I'm making up numbers, maybe it's three twelve, uh, uh, three seventy-two, who knows? But it always allows them to earn a small amount of equity that reflects how the market rises, as well as coming back the equity to them that they've earned by paying down their mortgage. And it continues to make sure that that house is affordable to the next buyer in the same area median income bracket that the first buyer was in. So, that subsidy comes to us once, but it stays with the house the entire time.
Because you don't, you cap the growth of the price.
Exactly. Yes. So, people cannot buy a home from us at three hundred sixty thousand dollars, and the following year, sell it at market, which Bankor Savings thinks is about six hundred thousand for one of these homes. So, that is important for people to hear. There's also a couple of other things people cannot do with these homes. They cannot use them as short-term rentals, ever. It is prohibited. These are for, these are for ownership of year-round residents. They may also not own this home if they buy another home. They are not qualified to buy one of these homes if they already own and will continue to own another home. This must be their primary and only residential property that they own. Does that mean that our people cannot go on vacation? Of course not. But it does mean that people may not own our homes and then have another snowbird home in another state. These are for year-round residents only.
And Larissa, um, you had mentioned, um, about, um, downsizing for seniors.
Yes.
Um, what is the reach-out mechanism for that in the town?
That's a great question. I think that that will be done through things like library outreach. I mean, if we think about places that have really great access to seniors in a community, you have your faith-based communities, you have your libraries, our Parks and Rec Department and the senior program that they offer, as well as places like Southern Maine Agency on Aging would be a, you know, another option for kind of sharing out information. We will also be hosting some community meetings, one at the Kennebunkport Library, one at the Kennebunk Library, um, that would should be ax, you know, able to reach a large body of people. Um, we are open to any other suggestions folks have as far as how to directly to, to reach seniors. I think that we can talk to the public health, um, team here in Kennebunkport and see if they have some suggestions about how to reach that population. These are homes that are not only, though, for people that currently live in Kennebunkport. While we do intend to have a lottery that has a local option piece to it, which would mean somebody who currently lives in one of these, our three towns, somebody who works in one of the three towns, or someone that has children enrolled in RSU-21, there will be homes that will be lotteryed to a broader market. So, there may be people that are coming to us from other places in Maine, other places in the region. We don't expect to see folks applying to this lottery from really outside of that. That would be surprising. They would be welcome to, but it would be surprising.
So, we can't, I think we had this question before. We can't, we can't do anything to limit, it, it can't be our three towns only, it has to be, the lottery has to be open to everyone.
We can and we will have, I think we're talking about having two homes that we do a lottery with that local option lottery that I just discussed. So, either you currently live in one of the three towns, you currently work in one of the three towns, or you currently have children enrolled in RSU-21.
Okay. And so, we are allowed by state to have two of the residents?
There's actually no language in the state of Maine. Um, there is Massachusetts, actually has very clear language about this and how you run those lotteries. One of the risks of having all of your homes lotteryed only to local people when you are in a community that has a lot of homogeneity in your demographics is that you run the risk of violating the Fair Housing Act by default. Because so much of our population shares, um, racial and ethnic and religious and other demographic features, and because the Fair Housing Act says you may not sell housing that discriminates based on these categories, if we had all of our housing only available to people that currently lived in these three towns, we would be, by default, violating at least the spirit of the Fair Housing Act, if not the Act itself. So, we think that the nice balance for that is saying, all right, we'll do the local option lottery first. Anyone, and then we can put those same names, if people want us to, into the, into the full lottery. Like, we can, we can work this out, but we do need, we feel that it's important to make sure that there's a, a broader lottery to accommodate, just to reflect kind of the, um, the homogeneity of our population.
So, the local folks have two bites at the apple.
And then another set of bites in the next lottery, too.
What's the next?
So, if we do a local option lottery first,
Yeah.
and then we make that list, right? And then we take all the names that aren't on the first two, and we allow them to be in the second lottery as well. They actually get another bite.
That's what he's saying.
Oh, that's what you're saying, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Two bites of the apple.
Yes, they get two bites instead of just one. Yes. I was thinking two houses, two bites, sorry.
What value is the tax based on? Is it based on the market value?
I love that question.
Or is it based on the sale price?
It, if we base it off of what's happening at Heritage Woods, it is based on the, the value of the home should the seller sell the home.
Not the market value.
Exactly.
It would almost have to, because the equ, your, your house and my house don't have a cap on your equi, right? They don't have a cap on you. But if you're capping the price,
Right.
you can't value it more than the price they can sell it.
It will be based on the sales price that the person has purchased the home at.
Could sell it.
Yeah.
But what, the appreciation, if they're in it for five years, then it could, it could appreciate up to what the cap allowed.
Exactly. But it will, so, even though we think that these houses, according to Bankor Savings Appraisal, would sell at six hundred thousand dollars per home, it would be not in the spirit of property tax law to tax them at six hundred thousand when they can only sell the home for three sixty.
Exactly.
Are we doing land also, or just?
Yes, but that would be included in that three sixty price.
Oh, the land's included in the house price?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what level of oversight does the organization maintain with respect to the governance of the community and all of that?
As little as absolutely possible. These are autonomous, independent people who have simply purchased a house from us. We are simply a developer that happens to develop outside of the market. They, we do ask, in the draft bylaws that I've put together, we do ask for a non-voting seat on their board so that we, um, in part to help enforce the affordability covenants that will be on these homes. We think that there is value in the Neighborhood Housing Trust having some kind of connection and touch point with the c, community so that when a home comes up for sale, we trust that our deed restrictions will be enough to make sure that that sale goes according to plan, but we feel that there's even stronger chance, if we're part of the governing organization as a non-voting member, just so that we know what's happening within it.
Yeah, so the, the price is covered in the deed. So, they can't, uh, there's nothing wrong with the person qualifying to buy it and then two years later, winning the lottery
Right.
and becoming a multimillionaire and just still decide to live there. I mean, that, that's like any homeowner. It's the sale price.
Yes.
Then the future buyer gets the advantage of it being affordable.
And we really, you know, we want our homeowners to be as successful as they wish to be in whatever ways that means to them. So, whether it's winning the lottery or, or receiving promotions at work, they have to be income-qualified at the time of purchase. And what we really see happening in most kind of attainable, affordable housing sort of situations is that there are people, when they reach a higher level of income through promotion or job shifting or through, you know, money coming into them in some other way, they don't choose to stay in the housing that we have built. Some do. Some are like, this is a great house. We hope that we build great houses, that people might want to live in forever. But there will be people like the house that sold at Heritage Woods. That was a young family. They were continuing to have more children coming into their family, and they really wanted a large piece of land that they wanted, and they didn't want to be able to see any neighbors. And so, when they had the opportunity financially to sell their home at Heritage Woods and to move to a much larger piece of property in an inland town, they did so. And it opened up an opportunity for another household looking to get started into the homeownership space to have access to a home that they could afford.
And Larissa, how's it with Arundel and Kenny Bunk? Are, do you guys have any, um, new sites proposed or?
We do. So, Arundel has a parcel that they are exploring, passing to us, um, that is quite a large site. We have asked if they can please make sure that the site is fully surveyed and that the title has been fully cleared before we would take ownership of that land. Um, it is a li, piece of land that is not necessarily accessible from a main road, and we want to make sure that we really have clarity on that before we would move forward with working to, um, to develop that site. And then the town of Kennebunk right now is really looking to see what they own for land and what would be suitable for housing. And they're also looking to see, um, kind of, what sort of partnerships could happen. They have a number of properties that include homes on them that need rehabilitation that they've been discussing with other organizations that are more prepared to do house rehabilitation. But those houses have land attached to them, and they're in places with things like public water and sewer. And so, while the other organization might be doing the rehabilitation of the home, we could be building a single home on that land. And then that would be a place, maybe, where we sell that house at cost, using our (c)(4). So, let's imagine that we have a house that we're able to put up for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Well, then we sell that house for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And a household now owns a house for three hundred fifty thousand dollars, and people are happy, joyful.
But with the covenant and the cap.
With the same covenants and the same caps. Everything that we build will be permanently affordable.
And that's a, that's legally, like, solid?
We believe so. And we have other organizations that we're modeled after that have shown that that is the case.
Okay.
Um, all right, so I've actually already cost, covered a lot of this. Um, so, you know, these, I think that one of the things that people are oftentimes really surprised by is that how can it cost that much money to build a house? So, let me break it down for you. Four hundred forty-eight thousand dollars includes fifteen thousand dollars of a sprinkler system. It includes sixty thousand dollars as their share of the road construction. It includes ten thousand dollars of their share of road paving. It includes, um, the cost for the actual house itself. Do you have the wood, the flooring, the windows, the appliances? It includes all of the engineering costs that we have, that we covered prior to, you know, just to get through the planning board process. It includes all of the legal costs. It includes about ten thousand dollars of interest that we will pay for the construction loans that we will take out in order to build this neighborhood. So, that four forty-eight, it hits fast. And it's one of the reasons why we are having the affordability crisis that we're having. If it costs four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to build, on average, eleven hundred square-foot home, we are really in a very unique moment of time. So, the, as I mentioned before, the house price cannot exceed three hundred seventy-eight thousand based on the Maine Housing Affordable Home Ownership Program. And we will be starting this summer capital campaigns that focus on bringing down a minimum of one home to the price point that is affordable to a household at eighty percent area median income, which is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, that is a big jump, okay? So, if we're pricing at a four forty-eight, and we have a seventy-seven thousand dollar subsidy coming in, and so, let's imagine that we also don't have to use all the continues or whatever. So, it's three sixty. Let's say we land on with the subsidy coming down, it's three hundred sixty thousand dollars total cost to us to build a home. It means that to get us to an eighty percent area median income, who's at eighty percent? That would be, um, using the RSU-21 contracts. Okay, that's the easiest numbers and most confirmable. If I have a household that has two income earners in there, and they are, one of them is an ed tech and one of them is a bus driver, okay? That is going to be a household that's earning in about that eighty to eighty-five thousand dollar range, just as an example of who might be there. So, that, oh, is my mic not working?
Yeah.
Thanks, Dave. Um, so, we will be doing a capital, we'll do a capital campaign through the summer and fall to try to really bring at least one of those homes to that two ninety price point for a household that, that's the level that they can afford. And if the community is feeling super awesomely generous, we'll bring down a second one. So, that's our plan.
And then they would start at the two, say, two ninety, and then their, their, um, uh, their growth from that would start from the two ninety?
Exactly. Yes. And they would also be required to sell their home to a household that earns no more than eighty percent of the area median income. So, it would be a twofold. So, we, it wouldn't be that somebody who, or, could, a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar house would not be qualified to build, buy that house. It would only be available to sell to other households It would only be available to sell to other households that were at that eighty percent or lower area median income at the time of the sale. So we can imagine five years from now, that might be ninety thousand as an income. But that's going to be the household income cap that they have as a market to sell to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just running through like, uh, the senior part of it when you were talking just now and explaining that. Cause if a senior sells their home, that's considered income.
It's not an income, it's straight across. So what we do is, so Avesta actually has some excellent, um, resources on this. So let's, so let's imagine a homeowner that has, um, is, is an older homeowner. And they have a house that maybe is on a smaller lot, it hasn't been updated at all. And it's assessed, it's a assessed value for, for sale is, um, six hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars. They have no mortgage, but maybe they own the home with another sibling, maybe it was a family home that was inherited by them. We would take, how much are they going to come away from the, with this, with this, from the sale of that home? And there's a formula to be used to assess, what does that put them in for income? Because it doesn't serve anyone to, to say, like, if, if you sell your home even at eight hundred thousand dollars in this community and you're looking to downsize, there is no place for you to do that. There is not such thing as an eight hundred thousand dollar home that's, you know, a- able to age and place in, in the town of Kennebunkport, doesn't exist. So we want to make sure that we are not excluding folks that really want to stay in this community and be where they have lived their lives and contributed as community members and volunteered. There's a way to take their asset and the, the profit, the amount that they come away with, and think about it not in terms of that's their income for the year, but think about it in terms of what does that mean their income is moving forward? Now, eight hundred might be a little high.
Yeah, just eight hundred.
It's a little high. But I, I think that it's a little high if it's a single person. But I, you know, I know a lot of, um, communities, and Kennebunkport is not exempt from this, where you have houses that have passed down by a couple of generations. And so you truly do end up with folks that are that kind of classic land rich, cash poor. So I've got two sisters. If my parents had left us a home in Kennebunkport that was a smaller home that sold for eight hundred thousand dollars, I'm going to walk away with less than three hundred thousand dollars at the sale of that home.
Cause you've split it between siblings.
Cause I've split it with my two siblings.
Exactly.
Right? So those people exist, and those people are people that we want to keep in this community. Right? And so we have ways to make sure that, yes, you can't have this very nice home in Kennebunkport where you make a large profit and you simply don't want to spend any more money on housing. It has, we want to make sure that people that need our housing are the people that are in our housing. But the, Avesta has been doing this for years and they, they have this lovely spreadsheet where you put in the amount of money that they're walking away from the sale with, and it tells you then where they fall in the affordability kind of line.
So it's a net worth, not just some income.
Can I get closer to the mic?
Yeah. Oh, Jerry, yes.
It, it, it basically takes in a net worth.
Yeah.
And then how that's gonna annu- annu- annuitize itself.
Exactly.
Out through your actuarial life.
Exactly.
And all that.
Yep. And we really are hoping that this will be a multi-generational neighborhood. One of the reasons for putting in these two bedroom, single story homes is we really did hear from folks that they wanted an opportunity to downsize here. So we do have a homeowner who was, I think I mentioned from the previous lottery. They are someone who has lived in this community for a long time. They are someone who lives in a family home that will be sold and will be split. And they are very excited to be able to continue to live in this community that they have loved for decades. We have another, um, there's a, a couple that has been calling me very politely and very nicely for, you know, pretty much every month for the last six months. Where are we? How's things looking? And they own a small two-story home in Sanford. And they really can't age and place there safely. They really want to be in a single-story home, and they're very excited about coming to this community and being part of this community. So they will be entering the lottery and we'll see if that's what happens. But we do think that these two-bedroom, single-story homes are going to be really appealing to a broad spectrum of folks.
Yeah, so too.
Yeah. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to just say is, anyone who's watching, anyone who's here, come, if you believe in this work, if you think that there is value in having your labor force be able to be healthy and robust, think of the number of shops downtown that don't, that aren't able to be open year round. Or that maybe had to limit their hours. I think about in Wells, a couple of years ago, the Dunkin' Donuts stopped being open as of like two P M. Cause there simply wasn't staff to staff it. We are building housing that the people that you see when you go to your favorite restaurant, that front of house manager or that cook that's in the back, that bartender that you like, we are building the housing that allows them to stay in those jobs because they can live close enough to justify working here instead of in any of the other communities that have the need of them as well. Come join us, come join our committees. We always need fresh voices and energy on our committees. Help us out with an event that we're hosting, we're going to be having a chamber music event, um, September twenty-fifth at the River Club with a lovely ensemble called Venti Cordy. Um, so if you are like, hey, I love chamber music, I'd like to help with that, let me know. And if you have a skill that really is, um, great to share with us, ma- we've got some sheds we need built. Maybe you know how to build a shed and you're like, I would love to build a shed, that would be fun for me. Let me know. And then we always do need donors. This work, whether we like it or not, it costs money, both to keep the lights on in the organization and to make sure that the houses are coming in at a price point that a broader spectrum of folks can, can, um, afford to buy. So we are always looking for help in that way as well. Any other questions?
You've covered it quite well.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Great update, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move to item sixteen. Uh, uh, this is the review of the proposed RSU twenty-one budget timeline and the impact that will have on the annual tax commitment.
Yes, so as everyone is aware, um, the school budget did not pass in all three towns. And so they are moving forward with a process to bring a new budget back before the three communities. The school board chair announced last week their proposed timeline. So by state statute, they have a timeline to stay within in order to bring back a revised budget, have a district budget meeting, and then a referendum. Uh, currently, the superintendent is proposing reductions to the budget, which they'll review this coming Monday, June thirtieth. Um, the school board chair is suggesting that decisions will not be made that night, but that that will move forward with the new board, remember the new board takes effect July first, and that they will make a decision in, uh, early July. There needs to be at least ten days before they can have a district budget meeting. And he is anticipating that district budget meeting will take place in mid-July. And then remember, they need forty-five days after a district budget meeting to bring that to referendum vote, uh, because of absentee balloting. So that certainly looks like a vote at the earliest would happen in late August or early September. So how does this impact the town? It impacts the town because normally Kenny Bunkport does our tax commitment at the end of July. And that allows for a tax due date in September. So our warrant requires that we have forty-five days between when we commit taxes and when the tax bill is due. So what, if we were to continue with the commitment, what would we commit since they don't have a, a, uh, approved budget? So state law does allow towns to commit the budget that was brought before the district budget meeting. State law also allows the school to continue to expend funds based on that district budget, even though it was not approved. Um, I don't think it's wise for us to go forward and commit taxes based on a budget that the voters turned down. So we are believing that we should be able to wait, you know, this will put our tax due date at least a month behind. Um, I spoke to Kenny Bunk today and I think they are doing their best to follow that timeline as well. Their timeline for commitment and tax due date is a little behind us. I mean, they usually don't have taxes due till October anyway. So they're not as impacted. But what this means is also that, um, it will cause a cash flow issue for the town. So we received two big bumps of revenue in, uh, March and in September. And then, uh, keep in mind that the bills that we have to pay will continue regardless of whether those tax bills, um, revenue is coming in. So we still have to pay the school on a monthly basis by state statute, even though, uh, their budget has not been approved. Our county tax bill will be due in September, and that's a one lump sum payment, uh, besides normal payroll, et cetera. So do I, and, and just to add to that, remember that we have some large construction projects going on um, that we are getting grant revenue for, but that we have to wait off in ninety days for that revenue, we have to pay upfront. So that has impacted our cash a little as well. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware and the community was aware of how this impacts the town and its tax commitment. Um, I'm not suggesting we make any decisions until we see how the meeting on June thirtieth goes and, and the first, uh, few days in July. Hopefully we can align our schedules and hopefully, um, the RSU will be able to get a authorized budget the first time around. If for some reason they are not able to get a budget passed the first time around, I, I don't see that the town can continue to wait unless you're going to take out a note for, um, tax anticipation note. Which we didn't budget for the interest because that's not something we normally have to do.
I wouldn't want to do that.
I wouldn't either. Yeah, I, I, I think we wait to see what they, RSU twenty-one does in the next couple of weeks. And then we have another conversation about it. I, I cannot, I, I, I can't see us having to go into further debt to deal with the RSU twenty-one school budget. Um, so we can have that conversation.
I agree.
So we have no other, in the short term, until we wait, just say that, you know, we, they didn't meet the timeline that you laid out. We have no other means of buckets of funds that we could, that are doable? So I, so we can't pull from the capital reserve, we have no other funds that we could?
All that is cash that I'm counting. So the capital reserve and all those funds are on paper. And so all of that though is in our cash accounts and I'm looking at all that available cash.
Okay.
So certainly I have told the department directors that.
Yeah, so you're, you're talking just plain cash.
I'm just talking cash in the bank to pay the bills. So, uh, and I don't want to lead anybody astray that we're like, we're, we're, you know, nearing zero, but uh, it is a time when, you know, all the agencies, the library cams, everybody asks for their money July first, you know? So it impacts many, many pockets. And so I think that we will be fine, uh, given another month. I'm not concerned, I'm concerned about it going on further than that.
So you're, you're kind of saying we, we need to have this settled so that we can at least collect taxes maybe by October. Uh, we have to collect it by October.
If, and keep in mind that we have these two due dates to give people time in between them. And so if we start squishing that timeframe, that impacts citizens too.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we just wait to see what they do.
Yeah, yeah. It's amazing.
And the board, were you able to convey to the board, to the school board, that our town's deadline and?
They, they didn't seem to be curious about that.
Can we send them a, a note from our board, just giving them? They have heard, or I just would, should we put something in front of them that's cohesive to say, you know, this will greatly impact us if we don't have a, have a stay?
Certainly, I, I think there's a lot of information flowing around in that certain people have different ideas about what's going to happen. And that's why I wanted to make sure we have a public forum communication that we're telling people what our, our understanding is and, um, what our plan is to go forward.
So I have a question as new, new person prerogative question, if it's, you know, so what was the mechanism by which the budget went to a ballot? And how, could that duplicate itself on the next iteration of the budget? And somebody would challenge it in the same manner?
Oh, sure.
And it would have to be on a ballot and be voted for and approved, right?
It could fail again.
Right.
It could fail again.
Fail two or three times.
Well, I, so I mean, the mechanism here is they have to, every few years, both, all three towns vote on whether we want to require the RSU to have a district budget meeting and a secondary ballot. And, and that's allowed, you know, in state law. So they do vote, so then usually the voters say, yes, we want you to do that process. So first it has to go to a district budget meeting, which is like an open town meeting where people say, that's too much money, I motion this, or I motion that. And they have a vocal discussion and vote. Then whatever is voted at that district budget meeting is what goes on the ballot, which is through a referendum style. So this last time, this budget was approved at the district budget meeting, but it failed at the referendum.
And so to just build out on Joe's point, if they, um, so the way I, I read the pre-read is if the committee, if the school board committee, the budget committee gets together and they, say in July, per this timeframe, they vote and agree on a budget that's less, um, and that goes to referendum and gets voted down. We still, the way I read this is that we ran, they ran the clock out on us, we, we don't have time. We could grab that lower amount versus what went to the June ballot.
I think we would want to double check with our attorney.
Okay.
One of the challenges we have is our attorney from Drummond Woodson that would, um, advise us on this is also the school board's attorney. So there is a conflict.
Conflict.
So do we have to go get other legal advice or?
I think if, if, I think once it gets into questions, I think he's fine in advising us of his general opinion. But if it becomes, uh, we disagree with their interpretation, then we need other counsel.
Uh, yeah, I think if it, if it required a waiver of the conflict by the town, then I think that would be, that would be a pretty serious.
Yeah.
Discussion. Whether you wanted to waive a potential conflict of interest and have that attorney advise you or, and the school board at the same time with the potential that there could be some divergence of interests. But I don't think, obviously we're not there now.
So the school board does have a survey out, and we shared it on our social media. And they sent it out to their school, their school, um, email list. But people can find it on their website as well. And, uh, it is a survey to answer the question, did you vote for the budget? If you voted, did you vote yes, did you vote no? If you voted no, there's a few questions with potential answers of why you voted no. So they are trying to understand what people didn't like about the budget. And I'm hopeful that people will give them good feedback so that they can bring forward a budget that will pass.
And they also ask, if you wish to cut, where would you cut, right? So they get some feedback on that as well. Any other thoughts or questions?
I think we just got to wait.
Thank you, Laurie, just got to wait. Yep, yep. Alrighty, item seventeen, any other, any other business? Joe, anything you want to bring forward?
No, sir.
Dave?
Nope, just that we had a great crowd, great camp.
Well said. Mary Beth?
Um, so I just want to loop back to, um, the person, um, Kelly.
Kelly Graham.
Kelly Scott. Um, comments in the beginning. So we, we're going to get, we're going to have, um, chief come and that's, okay. Yeah, I think my, just my general comment there is, I just, um, I guess I should hold my comments.
That's fair. Until we get more information, I think that's, that, that.
Yep.
Thank you. And I, I have nothing, Lori?
Um, I've asked Eric to give everybody an update on Wilds District Road.
Still here.
As we know.
Aren't we? So yes, just on the Wilds District project, um, so I think you've noticed we, we did probably three quarters of that project and then we held off between Patty Creek and, uh, and Ward Road. And the reason for that is because the water district, uh, intended to move their water main. Their water main actually goes behind some of the buildings and in front of some of the buildings, but it's predominantly out of the street. They want to bring it out to the street and try to install there. So they're going to go from Ward Road, well, actually from Route nine, Main Street. They stubbed it before they did the paving project, uh, into Ward Road. So they're going to go from that location, they're going to go to roughly past, uh, the, the new subdivision that's there. So they're going to go from that location, they're going to go to roughly past the, the new subdivision that's there, Bow Sprit and approximately where the water tank is aligned with that, they're going to go to that location. Of course, this is a new, new installation, they're going to be down about five feet deep, they're probably going to run into some ledge. They're not going to do any, any blast thing, they're going to do strictly hammering. So they're, they're hoping to start work in, in July, late July of this year and hopefully be done sometime in October, maybe early November. At that point, I'm going to go in and reclaim, once again, pulverize that road and get that paved so it looks like the rest of Wilds District now. And next year, what we'll do is we'll go back in and begin, allow for some settlement because whenever you do any kind of excavation, there's, there's odds, there's going to be some settlement in the road. So next year, we'll go in, we'll do the sidewalk, which is planned in front of the Bow Sprit subdivision. We'll install that to the corner. And then we'll, I'll come in and we'll actually do the final overlay on Wilds District Road.
So this, this is the subdivision that's up on the hill?
Yes.
Which seems to have had a little bit of activity in the last couple of weeks.
It has, yes.
Put in some plants, right?
Well, they put some plants, but I, I think they're up there maybe working on, I don't know what to, but. So this will be coordinated, we're not going to have the water district do that stuff and then they're going to come in and put that in and then dig it up again? Kind of try and be coordinated?
Their, their, their utilities have all been stubbed in. And any stormwater service, any water services what have you should be put in during that time. So there should not be any other excavation. We're doing one cross culvert near Ward Road. We held off on doing that one because we know the water district was going to have to cut through it anyways. And we're going to do some additional storm drainage work also in front of the cottages further, way further down the road. And some other couple of locations that came up over the, this last year. We'll finish that up and then, like, as I mentioned, well, next year, we'll come in and do that final overlay and make everything, you know, sealed up again. That'll be the last time and we won't darken anybody's doorstep after that.
In, in the absence of a sidewalk going further down, will there, will there be some kind of a bike lane or a narrow? How is the striping going to work?
Well, you know, the result of the, some of the, the three public hearings that we had, really, you know, we had a variation. I think that generally speaking, there was, there were three different camps that went forward. Some people wanted widening, some people didn't want any widening and some people wanted some moderate widening. So what we did is really just kind of try to stay with the character of the road there and do a little bit of widening, some moderate widening. My intention is to go in there and actually paint in some ten-foot travel lanes and provide, you know, and show basically a small area to the side that's going to maybe paved. And also allows for, you know, trailers, it's a very curvy road in certain locations there. And so just allows for the protection of the pavement and also protection of the people.
And for pedestrians, just to be able to walk that, yeah.
Yep.
Watch out for those trailers.
Give people a little room to be able to get off the road. There's some, some areas when, near the Wilds District pump station, I did go a little bit wider in that location, predominantly because it's a very steep hill and it provides for a steep, and it's also blind crest there. Allows for a climbing hill if you're on a bicycle, allows for vehicles to, to hopefully get around a vehicle, a bicycle that may be going very, very slow.
So on a different topic, we had a, a resident ask a question about the mowing of the edges of the road and I just wanted to make a comment. So there's been the mowing and so very appreciative because I think what it's helped, I've seen that when the animals pop up, especially the baby turkeys, you can't see them. But now when the road edges have been nicely cut back just that little bit, you, your, your eye catches them. So I, I think we're saving some wildlife lives.
That's good.
By doing it. So I appreciate the team's work.
Swerving cars too, I mean, it can be a lot of.
Yeah, it's a good practice also for maintaining the road as well as sight distance.
Yeah.
Sometimes it can become an issue.
It gets down some knotweed too, so that's a good thing.
Get rid of that, yes.
And bamboo.
And bamboo, yeah, that's the same thing.
And what, ticks?
Ticks.
Ticks too, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're good this year. Okay, that's it, unless you have any questions?
No.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the only other.
Have you done this again?
Business is about six months ago, I gave you
Yeah.
the project spreadsheet. And so I have updated it since time has passed. And I'm going to wait till everybody has a copy. So I, under the project tab, if it is blue, that means we've accomplished it.
So blue is done.
So that you'll see some blue on here, so we were able to check some things off.
Nice.
Oh, and they're crossed out, I see, good.
Yep, I crossed them out, but I left them there so you could see that.
Good.
If it is this tan color, that means it was there six months ago and it's still there. If it is yellow, it is a new project. So you'll see under operations, there are several yellows. There's one under strategic planning and there's one under building and construction projects. So we are making some progress and we are, you know, there are some that, like Cape Porpoise Pier, we are making project, progress on that, but it is not complete. So some of these things are along the path of where they are. You know, the timelines, I think, are still fairly good for where we are, but some of them are larger than others. So anyway, that's the current list.
So just so you know, I have to take my magnifying glass.
You do, really?
Yeah, I, my glasses don't even, you, you can see that?
Absolutely, I can.
He had that surgery.
Our doctor, he's showing off.
Superman surgery.
No glasses, no nut.
That line right there, no, I'm just joking.
Great stuff. Thank you for this one. Amazing amount of work.
That's incredible. That's it, Lori?
That's it? We good?
Thank you.
All righty, we need to approve the June twenty-six treasures warrant.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor? All righty. And now without Sheila, we can't leave.
No, it's my, my role now.
David took it over.
Motion to adjourn. Discussion, we're out of here.
Here we go.
It's a wrap.